Good evening. I'd like to call the February 5th, 2025 New Hanover County Planning Board meeting to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone that's here in the audience as well as everyone who is watching at home. If I could, please remind everyone who's here to either turn off or silence all of their mobile devices. If you plan on speaking tonight and you haven't yet signed in, please make sure that you have signed in in the sign-in sheet so that we have you listed if you do plan on speaking tonight. I'd like to remind everyone that the meetings are closed caption for public broadcast, so if you're speaking here, make sure you walk up to the podium and speak directly into the microphone and clearly so everyone can hear at home. I would like to remind you to make sure that you also state your name and your address as well. At this time, if I could have everyone rise for the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
We do have some minutes to approve for the board. The November 7th, 2024 Planning Board Regular Meeting minutes were provided ahead of time for our review. Are there any changes or edits to those minutes? And if not, does anyone have a motion for approval?
I make a motion that we approve them as presented.
There's a motion for approval?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. The items from tonight's meeting will go forward to the County Commissioners Meeting tentatively scheduled for Monday, March 10th, 2025. The meeting will begin at approximately 4:00 PM and will be held here in the New Hanover County Historic Courthouse. The Planning Board representative for that meeting will be Pete Avery.
I'll be there.
He will be there. In accordance with the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners Resolution Adopting a Code of Ethics as adopted on January 4th, 2016, it is the duty of all county boards and committees to respect and abide by the New Hanover County Code of Ethics in the performance of their duties. More specifically, all Planning Board members should, number one, obey all applicable laws; number two, uphold the integrity and independence of the board; number three, avoid impropriety; number four, faithfully perform the duties of the office; and number five, conduct the affairs of the board in an open and public manner. It is furthered the duty of every board member to avoid conflicts of interest as defined in North Carolina General Statute, Chapter 160D, Section 109. Does any member have any known conflict of interest with respect to any matters coming before the board this evening? And if so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any undue participation in the particular matter involved. First three items on tonight's agenda are public hearings. The format for tonight's public hearing is that each side has a total of 20 minutes. There'll be 15 minutes for presentations and five minutes for rebuttal. As a reminder, this board is only an advisory board. The Board of Commissioners makes the final decision on any requests being considered tonight, but public comment tonight can impact our recommendation and what may be ultimately presented to the Commissioners. At this time, we'll move into the public hearing. Start with Matter 1, which is a text amendment request, TA 25-01, a request by Tammy Pitts, applicant on behalf of Wilmington Lodge, Number 343, Loyal Order of Moose, North Inc., property owner, to amend Section 444 Standards for specified accessory uses and structures to allow RV and boat storage and RV camping as permitted accessory uses to lodges, fraternal and social organizations with restrictions. At this time, we will hear from staff as to their report.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. This is an applicant-led text amendment to request to add RV storage and camping at fraternal and social lodges. In the application, the Moose Lodge explained that this is tied to a service that they have been providing their members for several years. However, the property is zoned R-15, which does not allow RV storage, and RV camping is only permitted through a special use permit. The applicant's request would permit for lodges to host and store RVs on their property overnight. The applicant has proposed several standards for the use, including days of use, number and size of sites, and restrictions for members only. New Hanover County currently only allows RV camping within approved campgrounds or within approved RV storage facilities, which have their own set of standards outlined in the Staff is asking for a continuance on this item to allow more time for research. Over the next several weeks, staff will be researching regulations in other jurisdictions, locations of lodges in New Hanover County, and specifically how this allowance would impact those current lodges and how these proposed regulations would fit into the UDO. Staff anticipates bringing a draft amendment to the Planning Board at their March 6th, 2025, meeting. This concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Zach, I've got one. Does the applicant is aware of your proposed continuance?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We do have one member of the public that's signed up to speak, Mr. Brian DeBose. Is he here? Mr. DeBose, are you a member of the public or are you with the applicant?
No, I'm a member of the Moose Lodge. I'm actually our immediate past president and the North Carolina Charities chairperson.
All right, and you're aware of the request that staff has made to continue this matter?
Oh, yes, sir. I came tonight prepared if there are any questions from the board.
Okay. You have any objection to that request at all? Or are you...
I have none whatsoever, sir.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. DeBose? Or I think at this time, we should probably consider moving forward with staff's request for the continuance unless there's something else.
I agree.
Thank you, Mr. DeBose. We'll let you know if we have any questions.
Thank you.
So it appears that obviously the applicant is aware of the request and does not have any objection. Staff has requested a continuance at this time unless there's some discussion from the board. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we continue this item until the March meeting.
Motion is on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Matters continue until March. Moving on to number two on our agenda, which is also a public hearing. This is a rezoning request, Z25-01, a request by Cindy Wolf with Design Solutions as applicant on behalf of Ricardo Santiago, property owner, to rezone approximately 1.97 acres located at 6312 Castle Hain Road from the R-15 residential district to CZD/CS Commercial Services for the use of a contractor's office, retail nursery, and a live work caretaker unit and other limited uses. Mr. Farrell, at this time, we'll hear from staff.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. You heard this application is a request to rezone approximately 1.97 acres from an R-15 residential district to a conditional CS Commercial Services district. Property is on Castle Hain Road just south of the Pender County line. It was originally zoned R-15 in the 1980s. Site is bordered by B2 to the north, south, and west, and R-15 zoning to the east. From the aerial photography, we can see the existing single-family home and a detached accessory building and surrounding commercial and residential development. Here's an aerial photo of the site with images of the property from different angles. These are examples of wholesale nurseries, and this is an example of adaptive reuse of a single-family dwelling. The existing home is served by a circular driveway on Castle Hain Road. The applicant proposes to abandon that existing driveway and replace it with two new one-way driveways. The existing home on the south side of the property will be used as the contractor office and a caretaker unit for the owner or an employee. The existing storage building will serve as storage for the business and will include a checkout counter for retail customers. Moving north, the site includes a stormwater pond, outdoor storage for mulch, gravel, and other materials, and an area for wholesale or retail nursery. There have been three commercial rezonings along Castle Hain Road in the last few years, and the proposed development is below the threshold that requires a traffic impact Mentioned previously, the property currently has full access on Castle Hain Road through an existing circular driveway. The applicant has worked with DOT and is proposing the two new one-way driveways. Adaptive reuse of residential buildings is common along largely commercial corridors where new single-family housing development is less likely, and the area's proximity to the I-40 interchange indicates the potential for more commercial growth along Castle Hain Road corridor. The applicant has provided several conditions intended to mitigate impacts on adjacent property. However, due to past complaints from nearby homes, additional consideration may be needed to further reduce those potential impacts. The Comprehensive Plan designates this property as being part of the community mixed-use-place type, which encourages transitional uses along highways in a mix of commercial and residential uses. Staff's recommendation is based on policy and guidance of the 2016 Comprehensive Plan, zoning considerations, and technical review. Since the proposed use is in line with the recommendations for the community mixed-use-place type, is a relatively low traffic generator, and is located near other commercial uses, staff recommends approval of the request with five conditions related to limiting uses to wholesale and retail nursery, contractor office, and a live-work caretaker unit, driveway access, buffers, lighting, and hours of operation. Finally, should the rezoning be approved, the project would be subject to additional development review through the technical review committee. This concludes my presentation. Tim Lowes, County Engineering, is here, and the applicant is here and is prepared a presentation.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
I've got one.
All right.
What's the land use directly south and north of the property?
If I could get my...
Not the zoning, what is being used?
So immediately to the north is a house, and to the south, let me get to the staff report. Here we have it. Okay, the applicant says they're a little more familiar with it, but I think immediately to the south, we have Michael and Sons HVAC Services.
Thank you.
That'd be here, and I believe there's a home there.
Ms. Ronhouse.
Can you pull up the map that shows the proposed use?
Sure.
Yes, good, thanks. So there's a 35-foot setback to the east, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that's all, nothing can be done there? And what's the requirement in terms of vegetation or fencing?
It would be a Type A opaque buffer, and there are three different options. One of the options does include fencing, but there are other options that are vegetation or vegetation with a berm.
Okay, thank you.
Some more.
Mr. Farrell, I assume, just looking here at the staff report, that the reasoning going for the CS district as opposed to the B2 was just because of the live-work caretaker unit? That's the only use? Because there's three distinct uses that we're talking about on this property, but that's the only one that actually requires an SGP. The other two do not, correct?
I will say that the district being requested does allow all of those uses by right. I'll defer to the applicant as to the reasons why they chose to request that district.
Okay, I'm just going by the brief summary here.
But that is correct. Those uses are permitted by right in the CS, but the live-work caretaker is not in other commercial districts. It would require a special use permit.
Okay, and I'm asking more for the B2 because most of the zoning, if not all the zoning on there, commercializes B2. So we have CS inside of, I mean, basically out there in an island of itself. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Hitt.
Mr. Farrell, I think it's a similar question to what Mr. Morris said, and I asked this earlier at our agenda briefing, but I feel like it's important to bring it out now. So the proposed contractor yard and retail nursery is allowed in B2?
Yes, sir.
So the need for CS is for, to allow by right, the caretaker residents?
The caretaker residents, yes, sir, is allowed by right in the CS district.
In CS, but not in B2. B2 requires a special use permit.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Farrell at this time? Hearing none. We'll move into the applicant's presentation.
Good evening. My name's Cindy Wolf, and I'm here on behalf of the owner of the property and the business, and he's here with me tonight also. I'll just sort of cut to, I'll start my presentation, and I believe I'll be able to answer all the questions that you brought up as far as the zoning districts and why we're asking for what we're asking. We certainly appreciate the staff's thorough introduction and their recommendation of approval. As we know, Castle Hain Road corridor has become a perfect location for these types of uses, small contracting companies that do their actual work off-site, but they have the need for office and crew staging areas to operate from. This site has easy access certainly to southern Pender County, right across the river, I-40 via Holly Shelter Road, or south to the I-140 interchange, so access to all portions of New Hanover County is very easy and efficient. The existing structures have been used as a home, a garage, and a workshop in the past. In March of 2024, a complaint was lodged with county zoning over noise and that a business was operating from the property. I spoke directly to that zoning officer yesterday to just get the details of the case and what had occurred. In July of 2024, after coordination with county staff, it was determined that there was justification for minor use of this property as a home occupation, but that that could not include the use of the property for storage of equipment from my client's other business. That equipment was removed and to another properly zoned location, and the case has been closed. There have not been any subsequent complaints logged or violations determined. He certainly bought the property with the hope that he could operate on the major thoroughfare like this, his landscaping contractor office, and thought that a retail nursery would be a nice accessory to that, to not only supply the plants for his projects, but to make that available to the public also. So you can see, as Robert put up, the zoning itself is B2 all around this intersection of Old Bridge Site Road and Castle Hain Road. The reason we're asking for CS instead of B2, obviously, there are three or four commercial districts in our zoning palette, but B2 still has the requirement for a live-work caretaker unit to be by special use permit. CS is a business district with just about 98% of the same uses as B2, a lot of the ones in B1, but we didn't have to come with a separate application for the special use permit. So that's purely what it is. It's a commercial district, but the CS worked as a better solution and not having that extra process. The proposed plan is to operate Good Hands Outdoor Living, a landscape contracting operation within the existing structures. The current home will continue to house one of the business partners or employee as what is defined as that live-work caretaker unit. That building meets all the prescribed conditions that are part of having a live-work caretaker unit. That southern end of the site will not change at all, other than to remove the current circular driveway out in the public right-of-way. Riding up the road, you wouldn't imagine that there is such an extended area from the pavement center line over to the actual property line, but in this part of Castle Hain Road, there is 125 feet from the center line of Castle Hain Road to his property boundary. If you just drive down there because of the driveway and everything else, you'd think that that was on his property, and it's not. So we've worked with DOT to work out the driveways that would not only satisfy safe circulation with the awkward intersection of Old Bridge Site Road, but then also just Castle Hain traffic altogether. The plan also includes that retail nursery towards the northern section of the track. That'll be the customary outdoor areas for materials such as the stone and mulch. Two existing containers that are there already will be relocated for small equipment storage, and then obviously the field for trees and container plant display. As a commercial use, there'll be requirements for stormwater management by both the state and county engineering. The obvious location is there below that retaining wall where the land drops off and where there is already a drainage ditch along that back property line. This topography shows that. Like most landscape contracting businesses, employees, the one or two that live there, and then anyone else, leave the site during the morning and go to the job sites. Administration and retail staff, certainly someone to man the retail nursery, would occupy operations during regular business hours. No new buildings are proposed. I know there have been some online comments of opposition to the petition, primarily arguing noise nuisance, and as I mentioned, the original issue was back almost a year ago and was resolved. Please keep, also keep in mind that there are other businesses in this vicinity that certainly have large trucks delivering to Ace Hardware. You can see this area right here is another landscape contractor. I believe they actually cut wood and have a much larger operation than what's proposed here. To mitigate future concerns, what we've done is propose multiple conditions. First, the equipment for the landscape contracting will continue to be kept off-site at my client's alternative property. So the issue with that equipment and backup beepers, I think that was the primary thing that I heard was a real concern. It was early in the morning. That we're proposing to mitigate by limiting hours of operation because certainly a retail nursery will still have a certain amount of equipment that is normal to any type of business along the highway like this. We have also proposed that nothing will occur behind the existing buildings. That setback for any new buildings, which there will not be any, is 35 feet. These buildings are well in excess of the 35 feet, and nothing will occur in that 35 feet, so it'll serve as an expanded buffer yard. The rest, the other two sides of the site would be applied, regular buffer yards, as Robert pointed out, a Type B, which can either be the 20 feet of natural vegetation, and that's what we would propose. You can see that there is a good bit of vegetation along both of those lines, and that wouldn't be disturbed. It would have to be supplemented as necessary to make sure that the buffer yard requirements for visual opacity would be met. The goals for a vibrant economy encourage continued efforts to attract and retain businesses. The property is in a rural section of the county, and properties in the vicinity are already used similarly. Adaptive reuse of the existing buildings is a positive asset. Through the conditional zoning district, we provide the compatibility and minimization of impacts by those conditions that we've proposed. The use is certainly an acceptable transition along a busy roadway corridor. And in summary, we believe that the request is consistent, reasonable, and in the public interest. We appreciate both the staff's recommendation, certainly hope that you'll concur, and we'd be happy to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Does any member of the board have any questions for Ms. Wolf at this time before we hear those in opposition?
Hi, Ms. Wolf, just a quick question. You said that one of the conditions was to keep the, kind of the noisy equipment with the alarms off-site. Is that, I don't see that as a proposed condition. What do you mean by that?
It was not a condition that started out that way, but in the past couple days, when I've been speaking to the owner, he intends to just keep that equipment on his other site.
Is that something we can maybe add as a condition?
Yes, that would be acceptable.
All right, thank you so much.
Ms. Wolf, I guess...
Now, there will be some equipment, but the specific equipment, where the larger trucks, and those are equipped with the OSHA requirements for backup beepers. I mean, that's just normal. But I guarantee that those types of things are also evident over at Ace Hardware, over at the other landscape contractor. So it's not just the noise, we believe, from this site that was potentially a problem or issue for the back neighborhood.
Understood. I think if we can be specific with the equipment, I think that's a win for everybody. Thanks.
Ms. Wolf, just had a couple questions, and not trying to go too much into the gentleman's business here, but to understand, because landscape contractor, are we doing, is it an installation service business, or does it also have a maintenance side to it as well?
I believe it's all installation and improvements.
All installation? Okay, so no maintenance, mowing, and stuff like that? Okay. Because there are obviously differences there. And on the equipment side, so essentially, if we put that as a condition, obviously, we're going to have to figure out how we spell that out. Essentially, the landscape contractor's office really serves nothing more than an administrative office for the landscaper.
That's correct.
For the business, okay. I just want to make sure that's what I understand you're saying. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Hitt.
Ms. Wolf, thank you for the presentation. Can you go over, I was a little, I got lost a little bit when you were referring to the buffers and the 35-foot and the 20-foot. Can you pull that side, or that's it? Can, just refer to them as north, south, east, and west.
All right. Along this area, this is a, it's not doing, there. That is the 35-foot setback line required by the code for any buildings. So you can see that our buildings are beyond that line, and we aren't proposing any new buildings. This line is the 20-foot buffer yard, and so where the plant display is, we would suppose that we'd like to get as much advantage of that area because it's natural, it's pretty much walk around that area or take a wheelbarrow to get the plant material. So that's the extent of, the 35 is what we're saying, where the buildings are and where that garage is, where the operations would be, the potentially sound most of it, is just extra buffer yard, because that entire 35 feet now is vegetated, and we would not be disturbing it.
The storage, plant storage to the north, is any of that anticipated to be covered?
No.
Or tinted or anything at any time during the year?
I don't believe so. The one, I mean Tango or any of those places, there are mat, there's matting put there, so they have to...
But no greenhouse structure?
No, that is correct.
Temporary or otherwise?
No.
Okay. And then refer, again, this is a heavily wooded site. So what, try to describe what existing vegetation you would try to maintain. I understood you would try to maintain the existing vegetation behind the two structures.
Everything there, then there is a large oak right there, so that's why the pond has a sort of interesting side to it, and then everything in the 20 feet.
In the 20 feet? So you would maintain everything in the 20 feet? I believe that answers my questions. Thank you.
Ms. Wolf, you do have, there are two other persons signed up to speak in support. I believe there is a Mr. Santiago and then also Rigoberto Hernandez.
If questions are necessary or rebuttal, I think that's when they would be of most use. So right now, I think we've provided the information we wanted.
Okay. Does anyone have anything further for Ms. Wolf or any of the other applicants?
Good evening, Ms. Wolf. I do have one question. This is kind of unusual, and most of the time we're here, people...
This is kind of unusual in that most of the time we're here, people are anticipating making a purchase and then based on what the board does and ultimately the commissioners may do, they either do or do not make the purchase. And you mentioned that the gentleman had hoped to be able to do this and I'm just wondering how we got here. Did he understand?
He bought the property four years ago and as I said, he has rented it to employees in the past. He was operating a business which he felt at that point was a home occupation and it was above and beyond that as the violation turned out. They ceased that expansion of the business with the heavier equipment being there and coming and going on occasion. And so right now, it's just a home occupation where, well, it's no different than some of the other properties in the vicinity that have a lot of sheds and materials and, I mean, it's just in sort of the nature of the Castle Hain area, I've found, because there aren't restrictive covenants to keep boats and trailers and storage of materials and that sort of thing. So the other thing that I think we just have to keep in mind and the advantage of being here for a conditional district is that today, a wholesale nursery could operate out of there, but he would have to apply for a wholesale nursery, but he would not have to rezone it. So by going through this process of the conditional district rezoning, anyone that's concerned about the use in the vicinity has now limited hours. They have the condition of lighting, they have the conditions of buffering. None of those things would come into play with a wholesale nursery which is permitted today. So I think...
So wholesale nursery is permitted by right?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Ms. Rep.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Chair. One additional question, the equipment. We understand that you will, the applicant will accept an additional condition to limit the size of equipment utilized on the property?
Right.
The other equipment, I'm assuming is gas powered? Will there be any fuel storage on the site?
No.
No fuel storage?
No.
Okay, thank you.
The equipment you would expect there as far as a retail nursery would probably be a small Bobcat. You know, certainly trailers with pickup trucks, that sort of thing. What we would not store there would be dump trucks, back loaders, you know, that's, backhoes, that sort of thing.
And I just want to make it clear because you mentioned keep the heavy equipment off-site and you just mentioned stored. The equipment will not be on the site. It won't be stored someplace else, brought during the day, utilized and then moved.
No, 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 because it's not utilized here. It's utilized on job sites.
The heavy, the heavy equipment would not be utilized on the job site at all?
No.
All right, thank you. Just make sure that's clear.
It would be on the job site, not on the subject site.
Right.
Project site, yeah.
Cindy, I'm going to throw this out there just on this discussion. So, and Mr. Attorney, this is where I would like you to listen a little bit. So my interpretation of this condition would be something of the contractor office, "You shall only be used for administrative function for that section of the business." Because the challenge is going to be from a zoning enforcement, let's just say we get this approved, we go to the county commissioners and it's approved. Zoning enforcement is going to have to figure out how they define if there is another violation of equipment.
Right.
That's the biggest challenge. I'm trying not to open up Pandora's box. I just want to make sure the applicant fully understands that and then I would also turn to the attorney and make sure that's a somewhat a valid...
Yes, sir, it is. And as you said, you would want to enumerate it as specifically as possible.
I just want to make sure I understand we're all on the same page when we're talking about that condition.
That's how I proposed it and we understand it because we talked about that specifically today.
Okay, all right.
If there are no other questions for the applicant and the other gentlemen do not at this time wish to be heard, we can move on to the speakers in opposition. I do have two speakers signed up for this evening on this matter and we'll just go in order of sign up. Number one, I have Stephen Setzer. As a reminder, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Stephen C. Setzer. I actually live at, in Forty-Bun Avenue, Zebulon. This is a weekend home for us here. It's at sixty-four thirteen Orange Street. We are a catty corner behind this proposed business. We bought the property in two thousand and seven, so we've had it eighteen years, almost eighteen years. We bought it as an investment, a weekend home. We love the river. It's right across from the river. It's what we wanted. It's nice. The business behind us has been running that equipment. I've heard it. I didn't, I wasn't the one that complained, but we're getting ready to sell and this could financially impact my resale of my property. There's no question. And also I want to echo what you said in that he bought the property the way it was zoned. He stands to gain financially substantially if you rezone this property. Is that fair to me and the other neighbors? He really should have got this rezoned before he bought it. That's not the right way to do it, to come in the back way. He also was running this business without getting it rezoned and that was not right either. Of course, you've already heard that already, but, so that's, you know, that's my two cents worth. If, if for some reason it does get rezoned, I'd like to see that the neighbors and me have some input as to how it's buffered, how it's, how the plantings are done, how the equipment is run, what size equipment it is. Because a Bobcat is noisy and it is required to have a backup alarm. There are some alarms that are quieter than others, things like that, but that's kind of all I really wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Setzer. I appreciate it.
Mr. Setzer, do you live there full-time now?
No, we're here, I'm here usually two or three days a week. I'm working on the house, cleaning it up, getting it ready to sell. Yeah, I live up outside of Raleigh.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Setzer, thank you for coming. I would ask you to pull your mic a little closer to you. It is a little hard to hear you.
Okay, sorry. Is that better?
You mentioned, you mentioned your, the community's desire to have a say in the type of buffering. So as proposed now, it is a significant buffer and it's, it's the most restrictive buffer. If I'm not, correct me if I'm saying, saying that, correct me if I'm wrong. But I do believe that the vegetation buffer and the thirty-five feet is one of the, one of the most significant buffers required by the county.
Yeah, I mentioned that because the staff mentioned there were three options.
Right.
I'm kind of curious what those three options are and maybe we get some input on which of those three options get chosen.
It's a valid question. Thank you.
And if I could mention also, I'm thirty-five years as a general contractor, so I know a lot about dealing with developers and zoning and that's why I don't think this one was done properly. It should have really been rezoned before we bought the property.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Chair.
Ms. Ron House.
Could you elaborate a little bit on the noise issues that you've seen recently and how recently those have been a concern for you?
Well, it was before, I think the complaint was filed and they stopped doing it, but I could hear the backup alarms on the Bobcat or whatever piece of equipment was over there.
Okay, so you're saying it's still, it's still an issue for you now?
No, I haven't heard it lately, so I think obviously they've had to stop, so I haven't heard it lately.
And do you think that if you're able to add a condition to remove the concern with the equipment noise, would that be helpful?
I think that's important, especially early mornings and maybe even late in the evenings when you're trying to have a quiet evening at home and you've got this beep, beep, beep going constantly. That's a, that's a little bit of a concern and I think somebody mentioned a Bobcat and OSHA requires Bobcat staff backup alarms. I know that from being in the business, so. And that's the kind of thing that's kind of important to me for resale because if my buyer happened to be there in the early mornings and it's going on, that could cost me a sale. There's no question.
Understood. Robert, are you able to give us the three options? Great, thanks.
So for a, excuse me, so for a Type A opaque buffer, you have three options. Option one is vegetation only. That's where you have a twenty-foot wide area with opaque vegetation, minimum of six feet in height, full opacity within one year planting, or you can also use existing trees and supplement with additional plantings to reach that requirement. And a minimum of three rows of planted materials are required in that instance. Option two is a combination of berm and vegetation. So you can kind of have a visual height of the buffer to also lift the landscaping. And then the third option is a combination of fencing and vegetation. That's where you can go to a reduced width from twenty down to possibly as low as ten, but it does require a fence as a kind of a change for the visual.
Can you remind us what this one is?
Pardon?
And these are the three options that, that they have?
These are the three options they have, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Farrell, the height of that fence, six feet or eight feet?
Fencing is a minimum of six.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Appreciate it. Moving back into our speakers in opposition, I have Mr. William Kroom. If I could just remind you to state your name and address and make sure you speak into the microphone, please.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is William Kroom. I live at sixty-three oh nine Orange Street. I've been there for twenty-two years. Neighborhood's been nice for a long time. Mr. Santiago bought this property, I guess, about three and a half years ago. And we were excited at first. He bought the house, he started fixing it up. I was like, great, this is going to be cool. Because the house laid vacant for, I guess, about ten years. The previous owner had renters in some, but he passed away. His daughter sold it to Mr. Santiago. Ms. Wolf brought up, speaking to Christine Bichard, one of your zoning officials. She informed me that Mr. Santiago was previously run off another piece of property that was zoned to R-15 before he bought this property, so he knew full and well coming into an R-15 property, this possibility. With that being said, I was one of the neighbors that made complaints for the backup alarms. It was from six AM at times. I tried to submit videos on the public forum. For some reason, Amy Dawson informed me that they wouldn't upload. Why, I don't know. I don't know. Anyway, it was from six AM sometimes, seven, Saturdays, Sundays. We've heard them as late as nine o'clock, especially during the summer when they're, when they're rolling along pretty good. And it's, it's not just that. They're cutting blocks for tanning walls on other properties, precuts, whatnot. And we're not trying to shut the guy down completely, but you have to understand, this is my home. This is where we live at. You wouldn't want to listen to a backup alarm running behind your home constantly. And, and it wasn't just the Bobcat. There's, you know, a three fourteen Caterpillar excavator running over there quite a bit. And Mrs. Wolf is saying that the equipment's not going to be stored on the property. I'm wondering how they're going to be moving their trees around if the equipment is not on the property. Which brings me to the property. I wish I had the chart that, that they have with the pictures so you could actually see what I'm talking about. What they're proposing, in my opinion, is frankly careless. It's reckless. If you look at the front of the house on this property, Mr. Santiago's property, looks like a one-story house. The property drops to the ditch, which is called Blossom Branch. It is the main drainage ditch for Castle Hain. From the store, the grocery store, the bank, all of that comes across Castle Hain Road by the hardware store and it comes around behind our properties. The county makes us maintain it, I can assure you. So we do. My property, they surveyed, it also runs back eight foot or further, farther than what they think it does. My deed reads that it runs to the run of Blossom Branch. It does not stop where the stakes are. It is eight foot in depth, more than what they think. So back to the property that, you know, and the, the, the fall on the grade, when you run around behind his house and look at it, it's like a two-story house. It continues that grade all the way to the ditch. My property is six to eight foot in places above the property of his in the back and it, it's low. This drainage pond that they're talking about putting back there, the very first storm that we have, it's going to overflow that ditch, that pond, and all that stuff's going to come right in, into the ditch and run right out. So what is that going to do to our wells? And my well's sixty feet from this ditch. Is that, is that going to be a factor? I don't know. But anyhow, if you, if you take into consideration the line from the road where they're talking about doing away with the circle drive in front of the house and you consider the house, the commercial property, parking behind the house, the buffers, the storage, the shop, the storage containers, and then all the trees, about a third, maybe a little more of a third of an acre to grow trees. That's not a quick turnaround. It's not a lot of property. I don't know that it would be financially feasible. I don't think I could turn around a third of an acre growing trubs, trubs and trees and sell them and make a profit. But anyway, basically all this stems, where we're at now is, is from the equipment running. When you have a seventeen thousand pound excavator running behind your house a week after your mother passes, the whole entire weekend, it puts a bad taste in your mouth and I don't want to live through that. And like I said, he paid a hundred and sixty, Chris stated, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for this property is what the purchase price was. And that's, if he does what he's going to do, that's going to hurt our property value, but it's going to gain his. Why should we have to pay this? Why should we absorb this loss? This is three or four million dollars of all these, all these houses back here. We all pay taxes and we're talking about a hundred and sixty thousand dollar piece of property. It may be valued a little more at that now, I don't know. But why should we take the hit on that? I don't think we should.
Thank you, Mr. Kroom. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Kroom before we...
Mr. Kroom?
Yes, sir.
What would you think the best, highest and best use of that property would be if not this proposed use?
I mean, he's already been operating a business out of there. I'm sorry?
Just excluding the fact that he's there or gone?
Well, the property...
What do you think the highest and best use would be for that property?
The properties on both sides are zoned to be too. We don't hear much out of them at all. There's no equipment running on their properties at all. The heating air place, all that's under, under storage. Doug with the hardware store across the street, I haven't seen any equipment on his property. He may have a forklift that I don't know about. If he does, it's in the back and it's seven, eight hundred feet away from us. We don't hear it. The pieces of equipment that we're talking about, where he does run them on the part of the property that's higher, I would say it's maybe seventy, sixty, seventy foot wide and then it starts dropping off tremendously. They're saying from some of this stuff that this property is not in a flood zone. I don't think it technically is, but I stood on my ditch bank. The water never came in my yard during Florence. I looked at three and a half foot of water in the downstairs of that house. The shop had five foot of water in it. The downstairs shop. I mean, I've, countless storms, I've walked back there and looked, there's water sixty, seventy foot away from my ditch, just hanging out back there. I don't know how you could even park trucks on it if, you know, in bad storms, it would sink. So, six-foot fence back there, that's at my feet off the back of my property. I can step my foot over to it on top of the fence. It wouldn't do any good. You're wasting your money at that point as far as the fence. You'd have to put up a sixteen-foot fence back there if it was on his property and then it would rot because it pretty much sits in water and heavy rains. So, I'd like for y'all to take that into consideration. I know it's a lot to take in at once, but I implore you to at least look at the grade of the land before you make any decisions because Cindy never brought it up and I think that should be, you know, something that, I mean, everybody's assuming this property's flat. It is not. Our properties are flat because they were, you know, it's, it's a built neighborhood. We bought a R-15 neighborhood. We bought that. It's what we wanted. Unfortunately, the landowner behind us, whether he, I don't know if he just didn't have the dirt, I don't know, but it runs downhill quick. The whole back of our property, all the way to the back of the house, is just low. It's a low-lying area. So the pond, I saw the retention pond when they sent the other paperwork out last week and I was like, really? They're putting a pond there? That's just going to overflow constantly. I don't know. I wish you guys would take this into consideration. Do you have any more questions?
I'd appreciate your response. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think that's it. Thank you very much, Mr. Kroom. At this time, Ms. Wolf, you do have five minutes for rebuttal.
Certainly. I've tried to take some notes on the comments that were made. I think you can't deny that the logical use of this property, when you look at that zoning map and you know about Castle Hain Road, is going to be a commercial use of some sort. Historically, these types of... Historically, these types of uses as not having large buildings, not having large parking lots, that sort of thing, makes a lot of sense as a transitional type use when it's right next to the residential. Um, there's certainly been no evidence that similar projects, which uh, Amy Robert showed. I, I mean, I've done four of these up, up and down Castle Hain Road over the last two years. And generally, they have been landscape contractor offices. And I venture to say that with the reevaluation of tax value that we're going to see in our county in the next couple of months, there has been no evidence that there's been diminished values just because there's a landscape contracting office um, in the vicinity. Uh, ponds have to be designed to meet the stormwater requirements for detention of whatever water is for the surface areas. Um, Tim's here certainly. We've gotten to the point where certainly uh, infiltration is an option if the soils are conducive to it. We did not have the soils on this one tested, so generally staff would rather have me show a pond than not show a pond and then have a pond later. But to ha- show a pond and not have it later, because there are other solutions, is a whole nother um, opportunity. The buffer yard, yes, there are three options um, for those types of, but certainly uh, the fence, as he said, wouldn't be a logical one. Creating a berm just mandates removing existing vegetation to move dirt around for the berm, so that makes no sense. So our opportunity to have thirty-five feet, at least twenty feet in the northern section of existing vegetation makes a whole lot more sense as our buffer opportunity. So that's why, that's what I've shown on it. Um, it is not in a floodplain. Certainly, local knowledge of what happens during some of these large storms is helpful. He's owned the property for four years. Um, it's not like he is a, someone looking to buy it and is concerned about what's there. I mean, everybody's concerned about flooding. But if, if I could just quickly have that site plan up, that ditch is below the level. If this were some other commercial entity, certainly it would be in front of you for approval, and you'd be looking at it by case by case. But other commercial projects, I'd venture to say, would probably have a large retaining wall along that thirty-five foot line and bring a bunch of dirt in to make it flat, because it is a prime opportunity. Um, you know, convenience stores would salivate at this particular location. We don't think that's the proper type of use. Certainly, you know, this is an opportunity for a less impactful use that we do believe is consistent with its location and that the conditions we've offered can remedy that, because there would not be able to be excavators or dump trucks if we're um, talking about that extra condition. And I guess, just lastly, uh, oh, and now I've lost it. Um, I mean, the types, some of the types of noises we're talking about in rural Castle Hain, in rural New Hanover County are things that go on on a lot of these rural properties with tractors, small bobcats, that sort of thing. What we're proposing for the retail nursery and smaller equipment is not a whole lot different than a r- a large riding lawnmower as far as during, or noise during the day, but in this particular case, we're limiting the hours. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Mr. Setser or Mr. Croom, you also have five minutes for rebuttal. If you'd like to take that, you have the opportunity now.
Thank you. Um, I want to uh, say that in closing, um, I guess you have to keep in mind that Mrs. Wolf is, is doing this for financial gain. She doesn't live there. Mr. Santiago doesn't even live there. We live there. We're the ones that have to deal with this. Yes, he has people living on the property, a caretaker. There's more than a caretaker living on the property, I can assure you. But I just want y'all to remember that. Neither one of them live there. We do. Thank you.
Croom, excuse me, sir?
Ms. Croom.
Excuse me, um, I just wanted to ask you, um, it was brought up earlier in the, the discussions tonight that a wholesale nursery would be permitted by right.
Yeah.
Would you rather see an unfettered wholesale nursery developed there or something along the lines of a landscape business with some re- with restrictions to hours of operation?
I'm not sure that you could make money as a wholesale nur- nursery there. Property's not-
It's not for us to say.
I mean, I don't think you could. I don't think you could g- grow enough stuff there. You'd have to bring it in.
Well, making the assumption that somebody, either the current owner or somebody else can try, would you rather have, would you rather have a wholesale nursery, which is permitted by right, or something that is, is landscaping business but restricted?
I would like to see, uh, i- if this goes through, which it's apparent that it's probably gonna go through, um, we'd like to see hours of operation. And I would honestly like to see stuff shut down at six PM, Monday through Friday. Uh, nothing on Sundays. We've already discussed that, because that's, that was a major thing for us too, is the weekends. Not only was, you come home from work and you're hearing this beep, beep. I wish you could see the videos. Just talking about a, a large lawnmower, that's not true. You don't, you're not running ten to seventeen thousand pound equipment around and it d- and it sounds like a lawnmower. Let's be realistic here. It's not. It's loud. It's uh, very noticeable. With the windows closed, you can hear it in the house. Bucket shing. I mean, it's, it's non-stop. So that's, that's why the complaint started anyway, and that's how we got here. But we would definitely like to see some sort of hours of operation. Um, apparently, we're not gonna be keeping the equipment on the property at all. I don't know. I don't know how that's gonna work. You have to move trees around. You have to move sh- like, some of this stuff's heavy. You can't pick it up. Uh, you're selling rocks, sand. How you gonna load it? You gotta have equipment there. So, I don't know. It's kind of back and forth. I kind of wishy-washy there for a while, but uh, anyhow, that's what I'd like to see. It does go through some hours of operations stringent, so we can have some peace and quiet at night and on the weekends.
Well, I appreciate your sincerity and your candor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Croom. I have, I have another question. I'm sorry.
Go for it.
Um, since the equipment has been pulled from the site, have you been disturbed?
Absolutely not. They've been perfect neighbors.
Thank you.
They have, you know, they've had the occasional party, but, you know, we, we can live without if we have to, you know? But no, to answer your question, smooth sailing.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Chair, does it make sense to ask the applicant to explain how they can operate their business without the use of this equipment?
You may do that.
You're good?
Ms. Wolf.
Mr. Croom, thank you.
Thank you.
Garden centers and that sort of thing. I mean, there's the blossom something or another on Oleander now. Yeah, there's a bobcat that has a front loader. That would be the st- I mean, there will be trucks to come in to drop the materials on occasion. Um, that's no different than any business that has a delivery truck come. As far as onsite equipment operating, there's no need for an excavator. There's no need for um, you know, large uh, trucks to be operating on the site. Now, for a delivery, yeah. I mean, that, that does make sense. Um, but the hours of operation, I didn't mention them. Robert didn't um, read them. They're certainly in your packet as far as any type of emotion that you might make. But the hours of operation um, that are limited to Monday through Friday, seven to seven, that's normal for any type of a business. Saturdays, eight to three, and Sundays, ten to three. Those Saturdays and Sundays obviously would only be for the three to three, and that's seasonal. You wouldn't have really a lot of activity in the winter. Um, so, I mean, that, the type of business that we're describing is relatively lower impact.
The applicant, so right now, we have on condition number five, hours of operation shall be limited to Monday through Friday, seven AM, seven PM, Saturday, eight AM, three PM, Sunday, ten AM to three PM. But it's stated as the condition of how I interpret it for every use that we're talking about. So it's gonna be for the wholesale nursery, retail nursery, landscape contractor office, and live-work caretaker unit. My question would be what you just kind of said. Can we break some of those out to have different hours for each one of those uses?
Well, there's really only two. There's the nursery and the contractor's office.
But you understand my point?
They do not operate on Sundays.
Okay, so there is a will- willingness then to break that out?
Yes.
Okay.
So the Monday through Friday, seven to seven, is all uses, both uses, if you want to call it that. Then Saturday, eight to three, both uses, and Sunday, retail nursery alone.
All right. Thank you, Wolf. I'm gonna try to steer us back to the, I know I permitted the question, and now we're a little bit off Yeah, we are. Off where we need to be. So, Mr. Setser, you do have four minutes and twenty seconds left, and it looked like you had more to say. So we do have time for your opposition rebuttal. We do need to allow you that.
Yeah, the, the statement about the nursery being, I guess, given right, something like that, would that give them the right to put equipment on there, noisy equipment and run it? I don't think so. Would it? That's a question now.
Well, it wouldn't, it would restrict us from being able to put the conditions on that we're discussing, the specific conditions that we're discussing.
Okay.
And I think that that is part of what we're trying to impress, is that there are certain um, permitted uses that are allowed in the current zoning that we don't have control over.
Right. That's, that's the concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard, either in opposition or in support, that hasn't had an opportunity to speak tonight? Seeing none, we're gonna move into board discussion. Um, we've had a robust discussion and questions, I think, throughout the presentations. In the extent that there are additional questions, we can use this time now to have those or to discuss amongst ourselves.
Just got one question again. What is the elevation of the property nearest Castle Hain Road versus the elevation at the eastern property line? Do we know that? I don't, I haven't seen it took about.
There's one here.
If you could bring my packet up, please.
It's like eight feet.
I'm sorry, Ms. Avery, what did you ask about the topography?
Just, I, I didn't catch that on the drawing, but the topography from the east side of Castle Hain Road to the eastern property line on the east side.
Yes, it drops about sixteen, eighteen, fifteen, one.
Sixteen, eighteen, two.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Quite a bit. But um, the back property line, as Mr. Croom pointed out, goes basically along the ditch.
Right.
And you can see the ditch varies a little bit. Uh, the property line that the surveyor gave me was the straight point between the one end of the ditch and the other.
And they have no plans to do any fill there?
None whatsoever.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any questions for, for the applicant or any thoughts? If not, I do, so.
So we're in, we're in discussion?
We are absolutely in discussion.
No, I, I um, uh, my, I, I will, I will state that my first inclination in review of this project, um, I had concerns because uh, it, CS, it, CS zoning is listed as a transitional zone between industrial uses and commercial uses. What we have is um, we don't have, we, we have a, a commercial use and residential use. That being said, uh, I'm weighing the other options, the, the other positive to this application, which was referred to earlier, is that um, the use, the, the, the nursery use is allowed in B two by right. This property, they could go through the rezoning process, um, especially, and, 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 and go through the S U P process and allow them to use this property by right. This process that we have before us tonight allows for conditions to be added to that use. And so I, I believe that that benefit of this process outweighs the concern between the, the, the separation between industrial and commer- and commercial uses. Because we're, we're given the opportunity to add conditions to try to minimize that impact on, on the neighbors. Otherwise, if it were zoned B two, we would not have that opportunity. So I'm, I'm leaning in favor of, of the application uh, as far as whether this app, whether a nursery can be successful or not, that's not in our purview. That's not our responsibility. That's lands squarely with the, with the landowner, and that's, that's their right to take this opportunity to do that. And we should not take that away from them. So, the, I, I, I think removing the heavy equipment, and I'm not sure how we define that equipment, but removing that heavy equipment from the property, um, I think is um, a benefit uh, that this process allows and that we should take advantage of it.
Chair.
Ms. Ronhouse.
I have a few thoughts on this. Um, I agree that this, this zoning and these conditions um, offer some good, good compromise for this project. I think the, the removal of this heavy equipment, again, I also don't know how to define that, but I think um, that seems to be the biggest complaint that I've heard. The thirty-five foot setback, um, the elimination of industrial activity, uh, you know, on Sundays, having just the retail competitive of that, I think also is a, is a good compromise. Um, I also want to point to, you know, our, what we're trying to do is look at the future land use of the comprehensive plan, and this is consistent with that, which is um, you know, having community mixed use. I understand this is all residential to the east now, but that is kind of the, the vision for the, the comprehensive plan, um, moving forward. Uh, I do wanna, I'm an engineer, so I can't help myself. I want to talk about the stormwater concern. Um, I supervise a stormwater engineer. The point of this stormwater pond is to minimize there being flooding. It's to, it's gonna be designed, there's gonna be post-construction stormwater permitting. It's designed to capture all that stormwater that would be going, you know, into this ditch and cause that flooding. So in theory, it, it should be a benefit uh, to the, to the community. It should be designed to, well, it won't work, okay? Well, that's, that's it. That's the engineer's uh, task at hand. Um, so I just want, did want to mention that as well. Excuse me, wanted to mention that as well. Um, so I'm, again, leaning in favor of this with uh, additional conditions that I think are, you know, we appreciate your concerns, and we're trying to add these conditions to alleviate those concerns.
Mr. Mattens. One of the beauty, the beauty of a conditional use permit is in the name itself, conditions. And as it is now, someone that can operate a wholesale nursery by right, they can bring all sorts of equipment. There's, there, there's just no level of protection you have there at all from the equipment or from the wholesale nursery use. Um, you've got a nice neighborhood. I was out there this afternoon. Orange Street is a nice, quiet street. Uh, I was on the subject property today, and cars are whizzing by on, on um, Castle Hain Road. Clearly, the, the highest and best use for that property is not, not um, single-family use anymore. So I think what we have before you is gonna be the best solution for right now. And uh, we certainly listen to Mr. Mr. Croom and Mr. Setser. Um, I'm glad that we're putting some additional restrictions on the Sunday use retail only, assuming that we go forward with it. But uh, that would take the whole, wholesale operation and any likely noise away, particularly on Sunday. And um, if we do go forward with the Monday through Friday, seven to seven, Saturday, eight to three, it's put, puts brackets on the time that can be allowed, and the fact that the- And the fact that the, fact that the equipment will not be on site is a far better situation than it could be with an unfettered wholesale nursery.
Thank you, Mr. Mattens. Does anyone else have anything to discuss regarding this matter? Mr. Moore.
I mean, I think the condition that we have to start with, so there's two additional conditions. One is actually a modification, I guess, of the, of one of the conditions, and that's the hours of operational use. But we also need to understand too, and I think Mr. Krim brought it up, and I'll, in the daily operation of a nursery, there's going to have to be a skid steer. There's going to have to be something, a five gallon, ten gallon, twenty gallon shrub, tree. You're not gonna be able to go out there and just grab it by your hands and put it on the, pick back your pickup truck. So there's gonna have to be some type of heavy equipment. And I think we've got to make sure we classify that if we're gonna put a condition. Again, the way that I've verbiaged this was the contractor office use should be only used for administrative functions for that business. That's a starting point. I don't, I would have to, I would probably lean to the attorney to see if that gets us where we need to be. I don't want to open up Pandora's box by having a condition and it not really meet what we're trying to go after here. Because if you just tried to define heavy equipment, do you go by NSC code? Do you go by a definition of the heavy equipment? I'm gonna wager that the county doesn't have a definition of heavy equipment in your zoning ordinance. So that's where we're kind of figuring out, what is heavy equipment defining that?
And, and that was my comment, exactly to your point, which is appropriate, that we want to enumerate very specifically. And since there aren't these definitions and there are many other different concepts of what these things can be, we'd want the applicant to agree to some very specific standard. We know, you know, obviously, we have these different covenants and they're, they're very difficult to enforce with, with a code enforcement officer, then, you know, you question the utility of them. So, so yeah, we won't have to, to have the size and the scope and the scale of the vehicles and, and the hours of, of operation and, and what, whether it's retail or wholesale, to be certainly delineated very carefully. That might be something that, that staff could look at, at some industry standards, best practices, and, and other jurisdictions and talk to the applicant and, and have that refined for, for the commissioners.
I mean, if I may, I, I think that ultimately, if that is a condition that we are contemplating placing on approval and the applicant is amenable to that, the applicant should let us know what that equipment is and we should specifically include it in, in our approval. I mean, you know, I know that we're asking them to, we're asking them to box themselves in a little bit more than I'm sure they're comfortable doing, but I don't know what equipment they need out there. And I'm not comfortable deciding or determining what that would be. I would rely on them to tell us what they would need out there so that we can include it in the, in the condition. Because I do agree with the attorney that it needs to be as specific as possible or we're gonna run into the issues that Mr. Moore has raised some concerns about.
Thank you, Chair.
Ms. Hahn, I apologize.
Appreciate that. It sounds like to me, and Ms. Wolf, I'm gonna look to you towards some clarification, but getting caught up in some of the semantics, it sounds like the, the activity that we're going on that were really upsetting the neighbors involved heavy equipment such as excavators, backhoes, dump trucks, that was probably being staged to go to job sites? That kind of sounds like.
Well, the other problem appeared to be the timing of it. I know when I spoke to Mr. Krim, he said he respected their, their work ethic. They were working at six in the morning and nine o'clock at night. And our hours of operation are intended to make a big limitation in that part of it so that it is enforceable by the county if they're outside of those hours of operation.
But what would they be doing previously with all that heavy equipment on that site?
They were bringing it in from a job site onto the site.
Right, so it's essentially staging.
Right, that's exactly it. And it would not be staged anymore.
So for my understanding, and I'm not an expert on this, but my understanding would be for a wholesale or in retail nursery operation, probably, they wouldn't need any equipment bigger than a Bobcat to move these trees. I mean, no need for excavators or dump trucks except for deliveries of bulk sand, mulch, et cetera.
Which would be during office hours, yes, absolutely.
So could we somewhat put the condition of only equipment, equipment used to facilitate the nursery operations will be allowed on site? And therefore, you're eliminating the staging operation, which that, if they were doing all the staging with multiple excavators, dump trucks, et cetera, that, that would explain all the backup alarms and all the upsetting noises, which should be greatly minimized in a wholesale, retail landscape operation. Does that sound accurate?
Yes, that makes sense to me. And it's limited to hours of operation. So it's not like they could even run the Bobcat after seven o'clock at night.
Thank you.
With Mr. Hahn's thought process, do we even need the landscape contractor's office as even a use inside of this? Because technically, if it's an administrative purpose only, billing, invoicing, is when I went looking at administrative, I would assume they could run that out of the office that's already gonna be located for the retail nursery.
I'll defer to staff on interpretations of what his business is, so.
I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, that, that makes sense, what you're saying.
We've cut the business essentially almost out.
Mr. Moore, I will just mention, the definition for contractor's office also includes things such as fleet storage. So if that is something that is intended to be available on this site, then contractor's office is still the appropriate use.
I mean, no, the fleet trucks are pretty much just what the people that live there drive.
So what kind of equipment do they actually have that's not there now, that's located on another property?
Oh, excavators and large dump trucks.
How big an excavator is it?
Hey, y'all, so.
If you could just state your name for us.
Rigoberto Hernandez. So what we operate is a skid steer. It's not a backhoe or big machine, it's just like a regular skid steer. For like, example, like you guys asked question, what do we need to unload plants? A dingo, a veemir dingo, which is, you stand behind it, picks up like three thousand pounds. Does not make a beat. A lot of landscapers use that, small nurseries use that to, to use it. That's why we have a veemir and a skid steer.
Okay.
And, and to be clear, when you say a skid steer.
Yep.
That's in general terms a Bobcat.
Correct, correct, correct.
Thank you. So, Ms. Wolf.
So, yes, the, the point of the landscape contractor would in fact be the fleet at night. But they are all pickup trucks and dooleys, not the equipment. They're keeping the equipment elsewhere. But that's why I think we would want to continue that use of landscape contractor.
So what I'm hearing is.
But I feel like in the interim, if this were to gain a positive recommendation to the commission, believe me, I'll be prepared to make some distinction if there is an industrial standard on the types of trucks or the types of equipment. And we can be very specific on that. And it probably would end up being, you know, weight, and a dooley would be the largest weight that would be as far as fleet or that type of thing. And then what he was talking about, I think I said, he said a dingo or a Bobcat or that type of thing can easily be designated.
Thank you. So what we're struggling with a little bit, might be easier for us to flip it and actually include in the condition what should be excluded. That might help us if we look at it that way. So what we're talking about is excavators, dump trucks, anything that's what we consider heavy machinery, clearly not for use as a nursery, retail nursery. So if we think about it that way, maybe we can get a little more specific as to exactly what we're attempting to accomplish here. Just a thought. While I have the floor, I do want to say, I think I shared a little bit of what Mr. Hip said at the outset of our board discussion as far as the CS zone. I, you know, looking at the, the surrounding areas and the way in which we are viewing as a planning board, as staff has directed us, that Castle Hain area, you know, B2 is the preferred zone along the Castle Hain corridor and the CS didn't really fit as far as when I looked at it. I understand the reason. I understand why they're looking at the CS for the permitted by right and to avoid the SUP process. I will say this, the SUP process would allow the conditions to be put on any type of approval. So this is not the only way to put those conditions on. And SUP process has its positives and negatives, but one of the positives, it would allow, I think, the surrounding neighbors to have an understanding as to how this particular use would impact either positively or negatively their, the adjacent property owners' values. And it would also touch on some of the stormwater concerns. So there's a heightened level of evidence, materials that would need to be provided that we don't have at our disposal here and we're not able to provide to the, the neighbors. And Castle Hain, and the whole Castle Hain area and this particular corridor is quirky in that you've got the residential developments directly adjacent and abutting what we're now attempting to try and turn into somewhat of a commercial, commercial corridor. So we're gonna have some obvious clashes in situations like this. But it remains that Castle Hain is becoming more and more commercialized than it ever was before. And we've got to figure out the best way to navigate that. To Mr. Hip's point, I do believe that although if I could, I would wave a wand and make it a certain way, it's probably the best way for us to move forward in order to have some sort of control to achieve what we want to achieve, which is place some of these restrictions to try to make sure that we've addressed the concerns as best we can of the surrounding neighbors and to allow the property owner to move forward with the operation of his business that we believe is consistent with those properties around him as best as possible. So I'm generally in favor of this. There are probably some other preferences that we could have in a perfect world, but based upon what we're dealing with, I think we need to, as a board, look at these conditions if we're inclined to move for an approval and try to impose those as best we can to address those concerns. And I think that we have a good start here, but I'm not sure, and I'm interested to see as to who wants to take a crack at any type of motion as to how we get to a final product. I will, I, not usually, but I will allow you very, very short opportunity. We will hear you.
The difference between a skid steer, dingo, Bobcat's a brand name. Skid steer means it's on tracks and it steers without a steering wheel, basically. Wiggle arms. The dingo, you stand behind it and you can look backwards and see who's behind you. I believe a dingo does not have to have a backup alarm. Tell me if I'm right or wrong. Does not have to have one. Because the operator can turn and see what's behind him. A Bobcat, you do, because he's inside a cage and he can't see what's behind him. So if he puts a Bobcat out there, by OSHA regulations, it's gonna have a backup alarm. Dingo does not. So that's something to kind of help you out a little bit.
Thank you. So maybe we need, in order to move this along, because we spent a lot of time on this matter, if someone has a crack at a motion and we can hold it, before we second it, we can discuss if we need to make any changes or any suggestions as to how we do it.
So I'm gonna. Ms. Wolf, you may want to come up, just, so I'm gonna take a crack at this condition before we get into actually asking you, I would assume, if you want to continue or not continue before we actually figure out what we're gonna do here. So no heavy equipment associated with the contractor office use shall be stored, staged, or used on site. Any use of equipment associated with the nursery shall be limited to the hours of operation. Let me read that again.
That, I understood that and that makes sense, well-written.
Okay, does that make sense?
If you can read it again for me.
No heavy equipment associated with the contractor office use shall be stored, staged, or used on site. Any use of equipment associated with the nursery shall be limited to the hours of operation. Mr. Attorney.
Well, are you, are you, the heavy equipment is, is including but not limited to excavators and dump trucks?
So I mean, how we've got this is that no heavy equipment associated with the contractor office use. So anything that would be associated with a contractor office use, none of that heavy equipment would be allowed. So we're not specifically saying what type of heavy equipment. We're just saying that any heavy equipment that would have to be associated with that contractor use.
Right. And, and that was just my comment. Did you want to say, including but not limited to excavators and dump trucks?
And we've got backhoes, excavators, dump trucks is what I've heard. Is that what the board has heard too?
Yeah, I'd, I'd kind of share.
That's fine.
The attorney's concern or, or at least the point. I, I think that if you can be specific, then you're not asking staff or any type of zoning compliance to have to explain what that is. Because the more, each step becomes more difficult.
So no heavy equipment.
Including but not.
Including but not including.
Not limited.
Including backhoes, excavators, dump trucks, but not.
Including but not limited to.
But not limited to. Associated with the contractor office use shall be stored, staged, or used on site. Any use of equipment associated with the nursery shall be limited to the hours of operation. Staff, does that get where y'all need to be?
I believe so, and I, I hope y'all don't mind. We do take it as a common practice, if there are conditions that are created at this meeting and we need to, after our discussions with legal, need to straighten out the language, we, we make those recommendations to the commissioners.
We, we figured you did. Ms. Wolf, so as Mr. Moore's outlined, the condition, and we've kind of worked through it, or is the applicant okay with the wording of that condition?
Yes.
Okay. And before we move forward with a motion, does the applicant wish to request a continuance, to withdraw their application or for the board to move forward with the consideration of a motion?
I think we'd like to move forward, please.
Thank you. So at this time, unless there's any further discussion, Mr. Moore, if you want to give us a, a crack at reading into the record the motion, and we will move forward.
Okay. I'm gonna move to recommend approval of the proposed rezon. I'm going to move to recommend approval of proposed rezoning. I find it to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan because the rezoning provides for the type of uses recommended in the community, mixed-use place type. Also find recommending approval of rezoning requests is reasonable in the public just because the site is located along a transitioning commercial corridor near existing commercial uses and conditions, where it will do some impacts on adjacent residential areas with the following conditions. Proposed conditions number one, proposed uses will be limited to wholesale nursery, retail nursery, landscape contractor office, and live-work caretaker unit. Proposed condition number two, existing circular driveway will be removed and abandoned. Proposed driveways to be permitted by NC DOT. Proposed condition number three, the entire thirty-five foot setback behind the existing buildings will be considered buffer yard. No activity shall occur in that area. A twenty-foot type A transitional buffer will be maintained along the remaining common property boundaries with the residential use by preserving existing vegetation and supplementing with additional plantings where necessary to provide the opacity standard. Condition number four, exterior lighting, including luminaries and security lights, shall be arranged or shielded so as not to cast illumination in an upward direction above an imaginary line extended from the light sources parallel to the ground. Fixtures shall be numbered such that adequate levels of lighting are maintained, but that lights, spillage, and glare are not directed on adjacent properties, neighboring areas, or motorist. And then, condition number five, of what we did, of which we have talked about modifying, hours of operation shall be limited to Monday through Friday, seven AM to seven PM for all uses, Saturday, eight AM to three PM for all uses, and then for Sunday, ten AM to three PM just for the wholesale nursery, retail nursery use. Is that what I understand is what we discussed?
I'll second the motion.
Hold on, I've got one more, one more condition.
Hold on, one more.
But do we need to include the?
All right, and so now I'm going to put it.
The live-work caretaker as a use for Sunday? I know that sounds silly.
I'm sorry.
Yes, to clarify, the live-work caretaker, that is where someone would be, that would be their residence?
Yeah, do we need to include that as a use? I am sure we're not.
Not necessarily. We wouldn't expect an hour's operation to apply to that, because that'd be where someone would be.
All right, and then, condition number six, which is an additional condition, no heavy equipment associated with the contractor office use shall be stored, staged, or used on-site. Any use of equipment associated with the nursery shall be limited to the hours of operation. We've amended that to now say, to include backhoes, excavators, and dump trucks. How do we want, if somebody wants to come in here, and how do we want to put that one in there?
So, when you say the no heavy equipment, I would say at that point.
Yes, so no heavy.
So, read it, no heavy equipment, including but not limited to.
Okay, I got you. Including backhoes, excavators, dump trucks, but not limited to, associated with the general contractor, contractor office use shall be stored, staged, or used on-site. Any use of equipment associated with the nursery shall be limited to the hours of operation. And are those the three things we want to put in there? Those are the three things I've heard.
Yeah, unless there's any additional heavy equipment that we feel we want to specifically include in the condition, then that is satisfactory to me. Okay, so the motion has been made? Mr. Raver?
I'll second.
Mr. Hip will now second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I appreciate everyone's robust discussion on that. We eventually got to where we needed to be, as far as a vote. We do have one more regular item of business on the agenda, the UDO maintenance amendment concepts presentation. Take it away, Mr. Farrell.
Thank you. So, this is a proposed maintenance amendment to our unified development ordinance. Just as a reminder, Department regularly provides maintenance or housekeeping amendments since the completion of the UDO project a couple of years ago. We have a couple of different types of maintenance amendments. Some are clarifications of existing standards, others are to make sure the ordinance is up to date, and some, like these, are related to legal requirements that have come down from the state level that we need to make to make sure our ordinance stays compliant with current statutes. So, the county attorney's office has identified three amendments that we need to add to the ordinance, the first is, or make to the ordinance. The first is the item that we have discussed in the past, and it's the removal of, the limitation of storage containers as a building material for accessory dwelling units. North Carolina Building Code does not have any restrictions on building materials, so therefore, the governments cannot have anything more restrictive. And then, we also have some recent legislative changes to the statutes related to how we release bonds. The changes set kind of a shot clock of thirty days from when we receive a request to release a performance bond for development, for us to review and provide either a determination that we can release the bond, or that, you know, additional changes need to be made, and we're going to include those, that statutory language in our ordinance. And then, the last is related to signs. So, if a, this again is something changed to the statute that affects any local government in the state. So, if you have a sign, and it does not meet the current standards of the ordinance, but you need to replace it or relocate it on your property, you can do so without having to come into full compliance with the current ordinance. So, those are the three items. And again, because these are requirements of the state, that we don't really have much of a say in how we choose that language, we're going to be bringing it to you in March for the public hearing, and then pending that to the commissioners in April. So, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Anybody have any questions? Hearing none, you're free.
Thank you.
That's all we have on the regular items of business. Does anyone on the board have anything for discussion? Ms. Roth, anything from staff that we haven't covered?
No, we have nothing.
That being said, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
There's a motion on table. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? No. Leading adjourn.